I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Breyer? Mr. Pritz?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor. I move that we excuse the absent councilmember.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that we excuse Councilmember Breyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. First item on our agenda is a very special presentation. I know the council is aware, but people at home that are watching this on TV don't know that we're celebrating our 45th anniversary as a sister city to the city of Nishiwaki, Japan. And we're very honored to have the mayor of Nishiwaki, as well as 19 other delegates that have been here this weekend to visit our city. So with that, I'm going to invite Sonia Maylander to do a quick introduction, and then we'll hear some words from Mayor Katayama.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Law, council president Don Person, members of council, guests, and Renton community at home. As Mr. Mayor said, my name is Sonia Maylander. I'm with the Community Services Department, here with the city of Renton, and as part of the planning group for the Renton-Nishiwaki Sister City Program, it is my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the city and in partnership with the Renton Sister Cities Association and the Volunteer Committee for Renton-Nishiwaki, and celebrate the 45th anniversary of our sister-city relationship. I would also like to take this opportunity to distinguish two very special gentlemen from the Renton community. They helped put all this together 45 years ago. Mr. Wyman Dobson is here, and Mr. Roger Richard. If they could please stand and be recognized. Together with the Renton Lions Club, other area nonprofits, and the city, 45 years ago, we established our sister-city relationship with Nishiwaki. So we're very proud of that relationship. Many of us have had special friendships for decades because of that relationship, and many of it started with Rogers' and Wyman's help 45 years ago. So thank you to the two of them.
Now, are you going to translate all of that into Japanese?
No, we (laugh) we hope our guests understand the majority of that message. We've been sharing much of that as we've spent the last three days together, sharing with them the greater Renton community and a little bit in Seattle. So we've shared many wonderful sentiments together. I would like to invite Mayor Shozo Katayama to come forward and share a few remarks on behalf of the city of Nishiwaki.
Council President of Renton, Mr. Don Person. Yeah. And distinguished member of the council. My name is Shozo Katayama, mayor of Nishiwaki. It gave me a great pleasure to say a few words on this occasion on behalf of the member of the Nishiwaki friendship delegations. Just now, mayor, this will give the badge, Renton City badge. Till now, we are citizens of the Rentons. Thank you. So I would like to express my sincere appreciation for the hospitality you have shown by accepting us. It is my great pleasure to be here in Renton with 19 citizens from Nishiwaki to commemorate the 45th anniversary of the sister-city relationship between Renton and Nishiwaki. This is the first time for me to visit Renton. The scenery in Renton is picture-perfect. Thank you. Just as I imagine our beautiful city, sister-city to be, and more than anything, I'm happy to meet all of gather here. It's been 45 years since the sister-city application started in July of 1969. Since then, we have been promoting the friendship among the citizens, students. Lions Club. And so on. In closing, I hope we can continue to promote the friendship between our two cities for a long time to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we have had a couple of very special days together. On Saturday, we took our delegation to the History Museum, Jean Coulon Park, Nishiwaki Lane, a beautiful view from atop of Renton Hill. We went to Greenwood Park and the Jimi Hendrix Memorial. We have visited in Seattle the Space Needle, Pike Place, the original Starbucks, Tillicum Village, and just a little bit of shopping at Westlake and Pacific Place. And a lovely dinner event last night at the home of Bernadine and Denny Docnells. Today, we toured the Renton Boeing Plant, the Meadowcrest Early Learning Center, and Inclusive Playground. We were hosted to a beautiful lunch at Toreros at the Landing by Mr. Ted Rodriguez. And then, of course, our afternoon ceremony and dinner and opportunity to be here tonight. So that's just a snapshot of the last 72 hours together. Tomorrow morning at 6:00 a.m., they get on a plane to go to New York City for a couple days.
Right.
And then they will travel all the way back to Nishiwaki, Japan. They might be spending more time in the air than on land, but we made the best use of our time with our guests as we could, so. One of our last final photographs, we would like to invite the following dignitaries forward. Mayor Shozo Katayama, mayor of Nishiwaki. Former mayor, city of Nishiwaki, Juichi Kishi. Councilmember for the city of Nishiwaki, Asada Yasuko. Delegation leader Satoshi Asai. Executive Director for the Hiogo Business and Cultural Center, Mr. Morihisa Mizuguchi. Renton has a wonderful partnership with the Hiogo Business and Cultural Center. They help with our programming and mentorship and interpreters, so appreciate the Hiogo Business and Cultural Center. Consul to the Japanese consulate in Seattle, Mr. Yoshiki Iwanishi. And certainly, last but not least, is the chairman for the Volunteer Committee of the Renton-Nishiwaki Group, Mr. Roger Richard. And then our mayor, Dennis Law.
Do you want the council?
And then our council to join our guests behind.
Our new master, Kelly. Your master.
Okay, actually genuinely.
I'll translate that.
All right. Fix my most.
Okay, ready, one, two, three. Aye, say no. All right, moistle. One, two, three. Aye.
Three, two, one, smile. Okay, one more, one more. All right, there we go. Thank you very much. Come on, we got you, sir.
Got a lot of flashes.
Aparati. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I invite all of our guests. We'll return to the conferencing center for a dessert and farewell reception. Have a great council meeting.
Thank you.
Bye. Very nice to see you all again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. Bye. Thank you. Thank you. That's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The textile, Nishiwaki has many, many textile factories.
Yes.
It's a very special.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
That's nice.
Okay, next, I'm going to call on Priti. We have another special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council president Person, members of the council. I'm Priti Sridhar, Deputy Public Affairs Administrator. I have a short, sweet, but fun special presentation for you today. Renton has got a reputation in our region of being the place of film. As you know, we've had the fourth annual Seattle International Film Festival this year, and the buzz is there. You know, it's the Renton Film Frenzy, it's the Best Fest. And in fact, how all of this came together was earlier this year when we had the wonderful gala and the Seattle International Film Festival. We were approached by members of the Seattle South Asian Film Festival saying, "We'd like to locate to Renton." Everyone's talking about Renton. So this year, it's our pleasure to welcome the Ninth Annual Seattle South Asian Film Festival to Renton for the first time. And they have the whole nine yards planned with a big gala event. Films, award-winning directors who are flying in from across the world who want to stay in Renton. And I don't want to say anything more. I'd like to welcome Dr. Alka Kurian, who's the co-director of the Ninth Seattle South Asian Film Festival, to say a few words. One last thing, they did send us an invitation to each one of you to please bring a guest and attend the opening night, attend the films. So if you haven't already, I hope you've registered for it. With that, welcome to Alka.
Hello, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to talk about the film festival. As Priti said, I'm the co-director of Ninth Seattle South Asian Film Festival, and it is my pleasure to invite you to attend the film screenings and the gala, the opening night gala in the city of Renton. The festival has been produced by The Sphere, which is a South Asian film and arts organization located within this community. It was founded in 2002 in the aftermath of 9/11, and its goal is to dispel some of the stereotypical images of South Asian communities that were being projected by the media and to offer alternative images of the South Asian community to represent South Asian people as peace-loving, progressive, and multi-dimensional rather than unidimensional people. And also to connect South Asian, the real South Asian stories to the South Asian diaspora living in the Pacific Northwest. The mission of The Sphere is to bring to the Pacific Northwest a thought-provoking, radical, provocative, and meaningful cinema to the region. And we bring, every year, we bring cinemas from Afghanistan, from Bhutan, from Bangladesh, from India, Maldives, Nepal, Pakistan, and Sri Lanka. In order to do that, we host two film festivals in a year. Seattle South Asian Film Festival is our biggest and the longest-running film festival in the Pacific Northwest, where we bring this variety of feature films, as well as documentary films and short films. We also have, since a couple of years ago, we've started a South Asian international documentary film festival, which is the only film festival of its kind in the entire United States. To celebrate representations of women and femininity and their arts and live presentations, we host a third event every year, which is called INO. The Sphere is able to organize a variety of these events with the support of grant funders, corporate sponsors, educational institutes, individual donors, hundreds of volunteers, and thousands of audience members. Without the support, we will simply not be able to do the fantastic work that this organization has been able to do since 2002. Now, talking a little bit about the Seattle South Asian Film Festival, it started out as a one-day event, and let me just show you a poster. Yeah, this festival. It started out as a one-day event in 2002, where we simply were able to just bring a couple of films and organize discussions around it. It is now spread out across a multiplicity of locations over 10 days. So we host the festival in the city of Renton that we are very proud of doing. It is, the festival is hosted in Renton, in Seattle, and at the Udaq, Bothell, and Cascadia Community College campus. We thank Renton for inviting us to the city and for their massive support and help. With over 41 films this year, SAF, in short for Seattle South Asian Film Festival, will be screening films, discussion forums, critical panel discussions, post-film Q&amp;As, along with at least 18 film directors that are coming from across the world to attend the festival. It is our honor to host the festival in the city of Renton, and as Priti very eloquently pointed out, the city is the most diverse city in the state of Washington, and we saw a good opportunity to bring SAF to the most happening film city of the state. Not only is it accessible, but also Renton is a new film festival destination of the state because it is hosting so many film festivals, and we didn't want to be left out. Yes, and so we have about 30 to 40 dedicated volunteers who've been working tirelessly for more than six to seven months in order to make this festival happen. The theme of this festival is Stories That Dare. We have, as I said, 41 narrative and documentary films. We are representing nine countries. There are 18 filmmakers that are attending, and we are collaborating with more than 25 partners, including the city of Renton, the University of Washington Bothell, Cascadia Community College, the city of Bothell, various community organizations, businesses, and media organizations. So it is my pleasure to invite you not only to the entire film festival, but also to the opening gala that is happening in the city at the Renton Pavilion Event Center. And you must have received tickets. In case you haven't received tickets, please let us know, and it'll be our pleasure to organize them for you. Please check out our festival website for a complete schedule of the festival. It's a fantastically made website where the volunteers have worked tirelessly in order to make it look as attractive as possible. But what I'd like to show before I leave is a 30-second festival trailer that'll give you a brief snap, sorry, snapshot into what's to come. So there we go. Oh, yes, sorry. The film festival starts on October the 31st, and it ends on November the 9th. So from October the 31st, well, October the 31st, the gala takes place in Renton. Then we move to Bothell, the Udaq, Bothell, and Cascadia Community College campus, where the festival takes place on November the 1st and 2nd, with a smattering of films from the 3rd till the 5th. There is an event that's happening in Seattle in the middle of the week, and then the festival arrives in the city of Renton once again. And the 7th, 8th, and the 9th, we will be screening the films and hosting discussion forums, as well as post-screening Q&amp;As at Robsey Cinema in Renton. So please take a look at this very attractive and short trailer. Oops, sorry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, and I look forward to welcoming you at the gala and the festival.
Well, we really appreciate you taking the time to come down here and to introduce this. Pardon me, we also really appreciate that you decided to host your festival here in Renton, so thank you very much.
You're very, it's our pleasure, thank you.
I'm sorry, council, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're going to move to a public hearing.
Fortunately, it will not be as interesting as the guest presenter. Again, for the record, I'm Yuen Wong, I'm the State of Services and Leader for the city. Tonight, we will be conducting our official public hearing as required by our state law before adopting or before before we're adopting a budget as well as property taxing. As you know, the development of the city budget take a whole year, but the budget deliberation process, we officially started in October, on October the 6th, with the mayor presenting his proposed budget to the city council. And over the last couple weeks, we have all the city departments presenting content of the budget in terms of what are the highlights and changes within their budget proposal. And tonight is the public hearing, and as you can see that after tonight, we will really, the budget is in council's council's area and see how we want to move forward. The proposed budget, in overall perspective, has $487.5 million over the two years in terms of resources, and the two-year expenditure totals $485.9 million. There is a slight increase in the fund balance, primarily is in the utility, left mine medical reserve, and fire pension reserve. And all those funds are designated for specific purpose and is not available for general governmental operations. So overall, the city's revenue side, globally, 39% of our citywide resources are from taxes. And as you can see, that we have a large share of the revenue source is from utility service charges, and also a small, a much smaller share in development service charges. And this are the key service charge contribution to city services. On the expenditure side, as you can see, the largest share is in Department of Public Works, and that take about 41% of all the resources. And the reason the Public Works Department is the largest share is because they do have substantial capital projects. That is both the utility capital project, as well as transportation and other airport projects as well. So overall, the city-wide resource perspective, the police, fire, community service, and community economic development service, which also provide direct service to the community, is another 39% of the budget. On the budget by line item, so what we just reviewed is budget by department. And if we break down the cost or city's operating budget, city's budget by type of expenditures, 38% of the expenditure is in personnel costs, and 20% are in services and utilities. And in terms of utilities, that includes the city's payment to King County Metro for waste water treatment, and including our payment to Waste Management for garbage collection. So even those are services and utility-related activities. So that's why that share is pretty large, because we do contract for those services. Capital is 13% of the total budget. Again, that's primarily in the public works area and then inter-fund charges and so forth. Another look at the budget is by service areas. Overall, again, $485.9 million in breaking down by operating budget, capital budget, and also transfers. And so over the two-year period, combined, $485.9 million. FTEs, we do have a net increase of seven FTEs in the budget. So we grew from 670... 7.78, actually, point eight, 678.78 position until 2006 is 685.78 position. And through department's budget presentation, we went through all the position changes that we're proposing. And I will spend a little bit more time on general fund budget. The general governmental fund budget is really the portion of budget primarily supported by our tax dollars. And this is the area that we have, when we had budget constraints or physical challenges, primarily is in the general fund because of the type of resource we have available to operate the city's general fund. And the general fund also provides most of the core essential services. That's your police, your fire, and your street and recreation and development services. The revenue side, on the revenue side, first of all, both revenue and expenditure, as you can see, that is rounded to $230 million, and the number is identical because we have balanced budget. On the revenue side, and this is two-year period also, on the revenue side, the taxes combined is 77% of our resources. And that's why when our tax dollars does not grow or sometimes actually decline, that put a substantial constraint in terms of resource available for the city to deliver those essential services. As you can see, the property tax and sales tax combined is 55% of our total resource. And utility tax is the third-largest revenue source, and in 2015 and 16, it's the first time in many years that utility tax revenue is projected to decrease in the next biennium, primarily because the older rate increase from all the utilities are very small. In the city's utilities, you know, don't have rate increases. And the telecommunications area continue to see a decrease in our tax revenue source. This budget does include the BNO tax, the other tax portion. Part of it is BNO tax. And within the 2015-16 budget cycle, we are projecting $3.8 million net BNO tax available in 2016. Now, switching to the expenditure side, fire, court service, and police, which is typically traditionally considered public safety services, is over 55% of our resources. And most of, I will get to there more, but most of the service are delivered by staff. And that's why when we try to maintain our service, really is, we need to have the people to deliver the service. As you can see, the Public Works in general fund portion is much smaller, and this is really the street portion, street and transportation portion of the Public Works Department. And this is another look at general fund expenditure budget by, again, cost categories. And as you can see, personnel costs, straight general fund personnel cost is 65% of the overall general fund budget. And as you can see, another large slice is inter-fund services, and which represent 13% of general fund. About 60% of that are also employees providing those inter-fund services, like the fleet maintenance, facility maintenance, IT, and so forth. They are also people in there. So when we take that into consideration, our personnel cost is really three-quarters of our general fund budget. And for that reason, any change in personnel-related costs, either wage or benefit or pension, whatever that is, will have a big drivers of our costs in general governmental operations. As I mentioned, we have, property and sales tax are the two largest revenue sources, and we do generate quite a bit of property tax. And property tax for city of Renton in 2015... And property tax for city of Renton in 2015 will be over $36 million, but that is only about 22% of the total property tax generated from the city of Renton properties. And so 78% goes to other governmental entities, provide other services. And so here is a breakdown of the 2015 proposed property tax. And this is a preliminary number from King County, which is refreshed today, so it's as good as of today. Our base property tax levy for 2015 is, basically, we start from 2014's base, add 1% of growth limit that allowed by the state law, and add any new construction, and we definitely have a stronger new construction than prior years. And also, they are refunds in prior years that we will need to re- levy in order to bring them back into our budget. We do have a couple of smaller annexations occurred in 2014 that is reflected in the annexation levy. So that's, the total levy is $35.8 million, plus we do have a correction from 2013's property tax levy, which amounted to $212,000, and for a total proposed property tax levy for 2015 at $36.4 million. And that amount, the $36.4 million, is 2.5% above what we actually levied in 2014. I do want to mention that based on the preliminary number, our overall assessed valuation in Renton actually is growing by 12.6% from 2014 level to 2015 level. And I just want to emphasize, the city is not going to take 12.6% higher property tax. Our tax will only increase by 2.5%. And the next largest revenue source is sales tax. Again, Renton's economy will generate substantial sales tax over $240 million, we're expecting this year, and the city will get about 10% of that. Actually, our base sales tax is $21 million for this year, and we do get criminal justice sales tax and annexation sales tax credit. This is another picture of how the city's tax revenue has developed, and how it, when we add the population growth, how that translates into a per capita tax revenue for the city. As you can see that over the last decade or so, the per capita tax revenue for the city dropped from the almost $900 per capita to about $650 per capita at this time. And that number compares actually very favorably with our surrounding jurisdictions. Renton in 2012, per capita tax revenue is 642, and you can see that there are three cities has a lower per capita tax revenue at the time, but Kent has since 2012 added their BNO tax effective January 1 of 2013. Kirkland also added property tax that left for both parks and road. So both of those cities have more tax revenue since 2013. And we, because of the revenue growth slowed, and in some cases actually declined over the last few years, and we did have to make reductions or generate savings in order to live within our resources. And cumulatively, the city reduced our expenditure by $32.7 million. Now, this does not mean that we cut our budget from $100 million to $68 million. It means every year, we have to go back and reexamine what we're spending and reduce what we could, and some of those are recurring and some of them are just one-time savings. But at the same time, the ongoing savings primarily will be generated from the position reductions. We did reduce our authorized position by nearly 100. That's after we considered the increase in 2013 and 14 biennium. So again, we did make a lot of service adjustments over the last few years, and it's because of those background, when we started looking at 2015 and 16's budget, and when we see that there is still a projected gap, is when we approached council to get council approval, authorization to explore BNO tax. And so, in the proposed budget, as I mentioned earlier, is a BNO tax. And the current BNO tax structure has a $1.5 million reporting threshold, which is the highest in any cities in the state. And the tax rate, we initially started with .01%, .1% of tax rate, and the current proposed in the draft ordinance is .05% for retail activities and .085% for all other activities. And we also have a cap for very large businesses, that if their annual receipts exceed $5 billion a year, they will only pay up to $5 billion a year worth of tax. And also, this cap will be adjusted annually by inflation, but the tax rate, we mentioned earlier, will only be adjusted by, if we do adjust in any given year, that can only be adjusted by the rate of inflation as well. So all these terms are in our current proposed draft ordinance for BNO tax. Again, we initially are anticipating generating about $5.7 million, and when we looked at lowering the threshold and lowering the tax rate, we still maintained about $5.7 million. But when we further adjusted the retail portion of the tax rate down to .05%, is when we lose additional $500,000 from this projection. So on an annualized basis, the BNO tax is going, projected to generate $5.2 million starting 2017. Proposed budget with BNO tax included is balanced. As you can see, that the projection for 2017-18 has a small and manageable gap at this time, but starting 2019, the gap will start to widen again. And the reason for the widening of the gap is our sales tax, sales tax, annexation sales tax credit expires toward the end of 2018, and that's why our sales tax growth rate dropped in 2018 and become negative in 2019. And because of that change, we are seeing a bigger gap in the 19 and 20 horizon. Again, budget projection, the Lawrence projections give us a little bit heads-up in terms of what's coming, and so we'll have time to adjust our budget accordingly in the future. There are a number of legislations that council will need to take action on, and this probably the most legislation since I've been here. We'll have nine combined ordinances for resolutions that council will need to take action on. We have a property tax levy ordinance, and we actually were asked by King County to also adopt a separate property tax increase ordinance, so this time we'll be doing that. And we'll have utility rate adjustment ordinances, there are two of them. We have pad license amendment primarily to clarify the qualified senior, as well as eliminate the fee for eligible low-income seniors. And of course, a BNO tax ordinance, and we also need to adjust business license fee ordinance, and then a fee resolution. So last but not the least is the final adopted budget, budget ordinance for, to adopt 2015-16 budget. The reason I'm highlighting this is, last week, there was some confusion, public comment that council can just take one action to adopt all, basic adopt the BNO tax, but each one of these warrants will require a separate vote for council, you know, as a roll call vote to adopt them. So with that, we will be bringing forward all the draft legislation next week for council to consider. In our preliminary plan for next week, we do have an early committee of the whole meeting, but I'm not sure if council need that or not, so it's up to council. And at a regular council meeting, we will be introducing the budget-related ordinances next week, and we hope that the ordinances will be finalized on November 3rd. So that's my.
Thank you, Yuen. Any questions from council? This is a public hearing. Do we have any correspondence?
We have no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have one person signed up to address the council. I call your name, please come to the podium and give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Kevin Wright, W R I G H T. And I was just addressing the council about the budget, which has just been presented. And I'm a resident of Sea-Tac, but I work here in Renton, and I'm a volunteer board member for the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. I think a lot of you are familiar with it. And Renton's always been home to CASEARC, ever since its inception. And over the years, the level of awareness about sexual assault has dramatically increased, along with our knowledge about how to respond and how to treat victims effectively. We're one of the leaders in the country on that. And we know that untreated child sexual assault has particular links to homelessness and to sex trafficking. And CASEARC can't provide services to everyone that requests help. We're turning away about 30%. And this last year, in our contract with Renton, we actually exceeded our contract by providing services to about 190 people, and we were contracted for about 90. And instead of the 360 hours we were contracted for, we provided over 2,000 hours of service. So we requested a 4% increase, and we recognize that the city has a lot of demands, we saw all the different costs that are going up, and we've had our costs go up too, and we're providing more services than we were actually contracted for. So we're asking that we receive the 4% increase, or at least not receive a reduction, because I think we're exceeding our expectations and fulfilling our contracts. To have a reduction in your expenditures and your contract sort of sends the wrong message that, you know, we're not effective, when we know that we are effective. So just hopefully you'll consider that, and thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you. Lonnie and Karen are signed up. Did you want to talk about, on the budget? Okay.
No comments.
Okay, that's fine. So anybody else that wanted to testify on the, on this hearing? It's a wish of the council.
Seeing done, Mr. Mayor, remove the hearing, be closed.
Second.
Remove by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. You guys have it. Thank you very much, Yuen. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, audience comment. We have several people signed up to address the council under audience comment, and Lonnie and Karen, I see you want to come up together, it sounds like. Please give your name and city of residence for the record, you have five minutes. We have a timer next to the city clerk.
Hi, my name is Laney Cavitt.
Laney, I'm sorry.
That's all right. C A V I T, and I'm a resident of the city of Renton.
And my name is Karen Sauve, S A U V E, and I'm a citizen of Renton.
Mayor Law, President Person, and council members. We're here to thank you tonight for your support of the St. Vincent de Paul Conference at St. Anthony's Church. We are an all-volunteer organization that has been working with the poor in Renton since 1954. The parish provides us with office space, food bank, telephone, fax machine, printer, and all at no charge. We work with all the poor in the community without discrimination. We have 46 volunteers who work with our program. Up until six years ago, all of our funding came from the parishioners of St. Anthony's Church. 99% of our funding has always gone to serve the poor. The food for our food bank is collected and donated by the parishioners and the students at our school. We work with our clients at our office, but we also have a unique service called the home visit. When clients can't get to us, we go to them. In 2009, I was asked to speak to the Human Resource Advisory Committee. They wanted to know who we were and what we did. Diane Utac calls us the best-kept secret in Renton. After that meeting, I was asked to apply for grant monies from the city human services department to help city residents with rent and utilities to prevent homelessness. Since then, we have been pleased to receive $15,000 a year to that end. 100% of the grant monies go to our clients for assistance, excuse me. Before receiving money from the grants, we were not able to help people with rent, we just didn't have enough money. But over the last four years with the grant money, we have been able to help 64 families each year with rent and utilities that we would have had to turn away before. If the human service budget is approved as submitted, the increased monies in our emergency assistance program will allow us to help between 90 and 100 families. We look forward to that opportunity. And Karen would like to share a few stories of the people we've been able to help.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad for this opportunity. So many people here are just one paycheck away from real hardship, and they're just barely getting by, and an illness or an accident can just totally set them back, and then they come to us. Who are our clients? The mom who wants to work but she can't afford daycare. We had, we have grandparents who find themselves raising their grandkids because the parent of the kids is having a problem with drugs, so grandma and grandpa get to raise them on their pension. Men who've been laid off to be replaced by younger workers who work for minimum wage. Companies have gone under, leaving their employees without a job, and they find they're a little old in the workplace, or their skills are no longer needed. And one man who was a carpenter, and he fell off a roof and was injured, and he's recovered, but he's disabled. He can no longer do the work he used to do, so now he's looking at getting into a retraining program. But in the meantime, he needs our help, and we were able to help him with rent to stay in his home, thanks to you. I had an older couple, they've been to us a couple of times, really sweet people. He is very, has severe medical disabilities, and his wife took early retirement so she could look after him, and she's been doing some side work on her computer to bring a little extra money coming in, but sometimes they just can't make it, and we have helped keep their power on, because he has medical equipment that they have to have electricity And finally, got a single mom. Call her Molly Brown, because you just can't stop this woman. She is a disabled vet. She served two tours in Iraq. She has two little girls, but she came home to be disabled by an abusive husband. And so she has gotten help through the Compass Center program, and she had her car break down, just have her car. So we paid her utility bill so that she could afford to have her car fixed. So we paid her utility bill so that she could afford to have her car fixed. And it's every week, I'm in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it's just this way all the time. I keep reading that the economy is getting better. Well, we don't see it. Our clients don't see it. And so we are very, very grateful to you for the help that you give us to help these people. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate the service that you provide, and trying to address the complexities and the growing concern associated with homelessness has been a priority of this entire council for some time, so we're really appreciative to hear the feedback of how you're able to help people stay independent and stay in their homes. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That is reflected in your budget, and we appreciate that.
Thanks.
Howard McComber, live in the Renton Highlands. I think that the night here has to do with cooperation, the folks from Japan and everybody else. Most important thing we do is working together closely to improve our city, to help our community, to make things work. Appreciate all your support at our Reach Gala charity, and I also appreciate everybody at community and schools and all the other things that we do as a group. I think that the folks out there who are watching TV, if they have a question that they can help, there's always places they can help. These two ladies from St. Anthony's are part of Reach, and all sorts of people reach out to help each other. This is important. This is what makes it happen. Ewan's done a fabulous job with the budget, but she can't create money. If she was Russell Stiltski, we'd be all right, but she can't do it. She can only account for, which she does perfectly. But I think that we need to look at ways that we can help each other, and ways we can be creative in helping the folks who are most in need. And so I appreciate your cooperation in that. We'll be having more drives and more things having to do with, with the feeding programs that we have and the homeless programs. We do have wonderful donors who are helping us, but we always need, unfortunately, more because there's just a greater demand. So not to think, just because we've done well in the past, that we've got it made. The demand's going to get tougher in the future, and it's going to mean, everybody has to figure out what they personally can do to make it better. And also, I'm thankful that we have such a diverse city. Greg Taylor is probably one of the champions for diversity in our, in our city, and I appreciate all the reaching out you do to help bring everybody together. We need to all feel close to each other and to invite everybody to the table. The more we do that, the more we share each other, the happier place we'll have. But Renton still stands, in my opinion, as the best volunteer city in probably the country. And I want to thank you for setting a good example. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have five items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, move the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business.
Mr. Cormond?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, actually, I do have one committee report.
Go ahead.
A Utilities Committee committee report, 2015, 2016 utility revenue requirements, CIP and fees. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in a staff recommendation to approve the 2015, 2016 revenue increase of 4 percent each year for surface water. Maintain the current solid waste water and wastewater rates for 2015 and 2016. Approve the increase of 5 percent each year for the commercial roll-off solid waste customer class. Approve the reduction in the King County rate stabilization charge from $1.16 to $0.58 for 2015 and 2016 per wastewater account. And approve the proposed 2015 and 2016 system development charges and updated utility development fees, and approve the changes to the city code to clarify the water shut-off fee and the definition of the qualifications for reduced rates. The committee further recommends that the ordinances be prepared to amend Chapter 1 Garbage, Chapter 2 Storm and Surface Water, Chapter 4 Water, and Chapter 5 Sewer of Title 8 Health and Sanitation of City Code and be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the findings of the Utility Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have four ordinances for second and final reading.
The ordinances are regarding the docket, Title IV Development Regulation, Docket The first ordinance regarding garage setbacks. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 42110 and 42115 of Chapter 2 Zoning Districts uses and standards of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, establishing a minimum setback for garages and carports of 20 feet and allowing a front and side yard along a street setback reduction for properties fronting a turnaround for emergency services vehicles.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Cormond?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Guys have it.
The next ordinance is regarding private streets. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section 44080 of Chapter 4, citywide property development standards, Section 46060 of Chapter 6, street utility standards, Section 47170 of Chapter 7 subdivision regulations, and Sections 411190 and 411250 of Chapter 11, definitions of Title IV Development Regulations of the City Code, reducing the number of lots that can be accessed by a private street, excluding the creation of a private street in conjunction with the subdivision of 10 or more lots, limiting their length to 200 feet, requiring the private street be within a tract, and precise language be recorded on the face of the plat, and revising different references to easements and private streets to tracks and shared driveways.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Cormond?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Guys have it.
The next ordinance is regarding lot line adjustments. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 47060 and 47170 of Chapter 7 subdivision regulations, and Section 411120 of Chapter 11, definitions of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, clarifying the lot line adjustment definition as standards, requiring subject lots to be within the same zoning district, creating a non-evasive provision to prevent lot line adjustments from circumventing development standards typically required for subdivisions, and establishing a maximum width-to-depth lot line ratio for all residential lots.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Cormond?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Guys have it.
The last ordinance is regarding parking requirements. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section 44080 of Chapter 4, citywide property development standards of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, establishing criteria by which a development may reduce or increase the number of parking spaces provided onsite, and reducing the number of driveways permitted for uses other than industrial, warehouse, and shopping centers based on the amount of street frontage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Cormond?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Guys have it. Thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is kind of in the realm of new and old business. Since we completed our budget deliberations this evening, I have a committee report that I would like to have read. Jason, do you have it? I have it right here.
Committee of the whole committee report, 2015-16 BNO budget. The committee of the whole reviewed the administration-proposed 2015-16 budget in the amount of $243,543,692 and $242,343,675 for 2015 and 2016 respectively, and recommends concurrence in the following actions. One, property tax levy. Set the 2015 property tax levy using the preliminary property tax worksheet provided by King County showing estimated property taxes of approximately $36,420,000 based on the 1 percent growth limit, plus new construction, annexation, and re-leveying refunds and corrections. The total property tax levy is an increase of 2.5 percent from the amount actually levied in 2014. The base 2015 levy without new construction, annexation, and corrections is $35,160,000 or 1.03 percent below last year's actual levy. Two, business and occupation tax. Affirm the action taken on the BNO tax on September 15, 2014, and recognize the revenue is included in the administration-proposed budget. Three, business license fee adjustment. Increase the per-employee business license fee from $65 to $67.5 to reflect the rate of inflation since last adjustment, and make reporting schedule changes to synchronize the timing with the new BNO tax. Four, utility rate and fee changes. Approve the proposed 4 percent surface water rate increase, the proposed rate increases for commercial garbage extra and roll-off services, rental changes, and the 5.6 percent proposed King County metro sewer rate increase as outlined in the draft ordinances included with the proposed budget. Five, other rates and fee adjustments. Approve the lower age threshold for senior low-income pet license and eliminate the associated fees, adjust pet license fee for unaltered pets, parks and facilities use in rental fees, aquatic fees, golf course fees, utility system development charges, land use and other development service fees, including impact fees and public work construction permit fees as identified in the proposed fee schedule located in Section 7, appendix of the proposed budget. And six, legislation approved the 2015-16 proposed budget action items listed above, and incorporate any adjustments made by city council, draft, and present the related legislations for first reading at council's regular meeting on October 27th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the, move the committee report to be approved as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council approve the committee of the whole report. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thank you, and thank you, Jason. Ms. Palmer?
He's not done.
Oh, you're not done? Okay, we'll go ahead and finish.
I'm on new business. I've been working all week.
If you take care of your old business, we're supposed to, we wouldn't be having this.
Well, I thought it was kind of one of those new business, old business things. It was squishy. Anyway, since we made that, passed this report, I'm going to suggest to the council that the committee of the whole that's scheduled for 5:00 PM next week be canceled, unless somebody wants to come in and discuss the budget.
Any feedback from council?
I agree.
Okay, looks like everybody agrees.
Something else we should be looking at.
Okay.
Then, I got two more.
I'm letting.
And since we're, since we're moving ahead with the budget and getting it done, and I gotta look at my calendar, so I say the dates right. Date falls on November 11th. I would move that we cancel the council meeting for November 10th.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council, cancel the council meeting of November 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
And then I also announce, to give everybody plenty of time, Julia, I discussed it with Julia today, our council liaison, that we do the council president and president pro temp election on November 3rd. So I'll bring that up.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Okay, on behalf of Chair Breyer, I'll announce the Finance Committee, but we sure don't want to be here at 4:00.
Well, you don't need to be here till 5:00 at least.
Six.
Or 6:00.
Because you're just gonna go, we have an hour scheduled. So Finance Committee will meet next Monday, October 27th, in the council conference room, beginning at 6:00 PM. There are three items on the agenda. The first one is Amazing Grace School Lease at 200 Mill Avenue Building. Second is vouchers, and the third is emerging issues in revenue streams. And that's all I have. Oh, I better announce, Transportation Committee normally scheduled for this Thursday. October 23rd is canceled, and now that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cormond?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has a committee meeting this Thursday at 3:30 here in the council chambers, and we'll be discussing the enclave appeal. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
We have audience comment.
Yeah. Anybody that wanted to address the council? No staff member?
Mr. Mayor, move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.